Good afternoon and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, February 25th. We are coming to you this evening fully remote. Currently, I have members Teresa Stewart, Kate Sipping Dunn, and Joan Giblin online. Member David Hilt will be joining us shortly. So at 4:07, I'll call this meeting to order and we will get moving right along. We only have one area here before we need to do executive session for a short, for a short while, but under budget, Mr. Luff is going to take us through, and Mr. Manning is going to take us through the updated budget items before, so we can look at them and review them before we go to the budget balancing committee meeting later this week.
So thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. As part of the budget development process, I did want to make an announcement as part of the budget process. And that announcement is that we have hired and signed a contract with our new Director of Safety, Compliance and Communication. And I'm excited to announce that that person is Dr. Hugh Gallagher, who is currently our Principal of Norwood High School. He's excited for this position. He is perfect for the role. And as a part of my entry findings, as you know, safety was one of the primary responsibility and primary issues that had come up. So I'm really excited to have him on board to facilitate both with our staff and our students and our community, different avenues to ensure that there are safe schools and our kids and staff are well taken care of. So excited for that. With that, at one of our next meetings, probably not next week, but the one after, I will share with you a process that we will have to hire a new Norwood High School Principal. So I'm excited for Dr. Gallagher. Congratulations to him. He shared with his staff members at the end of the day today. And so really excited for that. So that is wonderful news. With that, I will go into some other news. As you know, the BBC has requested that we look to reduce our preliminary budget roughly by $1.2 million based on a projected five increase of five kind of a baseline where they shifted and talked about five staff members for the opening of Copley, as well as transportation cost increases, as well as possible tuition increases that we have in our budget. I think that was the major drivers that they had discussed and shared. And contractual obligations, obviously, as well. That was the other big one. So Mr. Manning and I, as well as Dr. Munoz, have worked tirelessly, I think, to develop tiered reductions for your consideration tonight to try to get close to that $1.2 million. I will share this with you in a minute. All of these have an impact on the school district and how we run. I have gone through the process and looked at the new positions that we have requested. And I've taken those as things that are necessary for the school district to enhance and improve over the course of the next year and onward. So what you will see here today is actually looking back at different efficiencies that we could find within the budget to shift monies to support this reduction that was requested. Obviously, this is totally up to you to vote on and to shift, but you'll see my recommendations and this as we move forward. So with that, Mrs. Ola, if you want me to share that piece, I can start that.
Yes, please.
Okay, so I will share my screen. And again, for the members of the committee that are here, there were some updates as we have gone through the process and shared this with folks. This is an ever-changing tool here, so I will share this with you now. So as you can see in this document, can you all see that? Okay? So there are three tiers, actually two tiers that we're looking at. The first tier, the first thing you'll see on this document is technology. This is our thought exchange program, our survey software that we've been using. We had projected originally $37,000 for the software next year. It's not an inexpensive software. We got it for much less this year. They've actually offered us even less for next year, but this is still on the table in tier one reductions, $37,000. The next one says, and I want to be really clear, it says new Copley positions 5.0, but it also says through transfers or restructure. So I am not recommending that we reduce the increases that we have requested for these positions. However, to reduce other positions, so we don't have to ask for funding for the new positions. So again, this is not reducing the ask to add to the Copley as we open it next fall. It is reducing other positions, so we don't have to ask for the increase, the budget that we have in the preliminary. Those positions are five positions that we currently have, and we are looking to modify the way that we provide our specials at the elementary level as we have an entire fifth grade moving up to the middle school. And this would reduce... Well, first, let me say, this will allow for a specialist schedule that allows for prep time for teachers at their grade levels, right? So all grade level one teachers, for example, in each school will have the same prep time where they can decide to do common planning time during that time if they go forward to really enhance instruction. It will allow for a common planning time or similar prep times for all of the specialists. Each specialist will be in two different schools in one day under this model with time in the middle for travel and for lunch and setup and breakup time. It will allow for each of this elementary schools to have similar specials where we have had inconsistencies in the past, but also provide for the ability for us to reduce three positions that we currently have for elementary specials. Those positions, for the most part, will be transferred to the middle school. So for example, there is one wellness position that we would be able to reduce from the elementary school, and then that would be able to move to the middle school through a voluntary transfer or possibly involuntary transfer to cover the wellness position that we added in the budget. It also includes the reduction of two librarian positions, 2.0 librarian positions. But again, there are different avenues that we can do to support some of those staff members, hopefully to allocate if they're certified in different areas, for example, to move to the middle school as well. One position right now, we have noted, is someone who is not certified in any other area. So there is an impact to a person in this particular model. But another person is certified in a different area that we have an opening. So we can try, in all of these avenues, we're trying to provide opportunities to move elsewhere in the budget and in different schools. So that is wellness and two librarians. And obviously, the schedule, the specialist schedule that Dr. Munoz put together for us, and we've worked through with the wellness staff, with Jeff, with the union, with the principals. We've gone through this process and we think we have a really good model that works. No model is perfect, and we can share this model later date. We want the specialist staff to take a look at it too and see if there are different avenues with those three reductions that we can still have a really solid program. There will be, with that, some of the optimization things that we looked at for space will be no worse than they are now. They will be better, but they might not get us to a point where we thought we would be with scenario one, just as an aside, at one of our schools. We are working through that to get there, but nothing is perfect. But it does provide better instruction, I believe, for students, and it provides better time for teachers to work together to enhance instruction over time. The other two positions here, one is a Latin teacher at the high school. It's been under enrolled, as you've seen in the past, and it is this year as well. So this does reduce the Latin program at the high school. We will have funds in the budget to support any students that are currently in Latin that need to finish through online Latin programming. And the final position, we have a sub-separate special education teacher that we can move up to the middle school, alleviating the need to have the increased special educator that was in the budget. So those are five positions that we can reduce from the budget at the amount of about $391,500. The curriculum refresh is reducing that. We currently have $350,000 in the budget. It would reduce it by $100,000, leaving $250,000 remaining. Now, if we decide to go through the full ELA refresh, which is undecided, we won't really know that until the end of next year. This would allow us to pay 250, and then we would then supplement that with $100,000 from the FY27 budget in this avenue and have a smaller refresh the following year. This, talking to Dr. Munoz and the principals, is a very feasible option to ensure that whatever refresh we decide to do, we can do with fidelity. The next line is a mixture of textbooks, instruction materials, and professional development. There's $80,197 in this line. This is a further reduction than what the budget subcommittee saw. There is an additional, I think, almost $20,000 in professional development that we shifted because we can find that in grants. I will say too, going back to the 5.0 reductions, we did have a .2 in there additionally as well, but looking at the instrumental program and trying to make sure the fifth graders have that program, we wanted to keep that .2 in there to ensure that the fifth graders could have the ability to have their instrumental program intact as they move up to the middle school. That was the other change today. There are turnover savings that right now, we're just putting an estimate of $200,000 in there. And there are building materials requests that were in the budget, like for additional furniture and those kinds of things that we reduced by $20,000. So the tier one reductions that we were looking at here are in the amount of $828,697. I believe that all of these particular reductions are feasible, doable, and will still provide solid instruction to our kids as we move forward. Actually, in some cases, better instruction. So for example, for the specialist schedule, there are some changes to the time they would give approximately 35-minute sessions, but there would be a rotating block for the specialists to provide more instruction. And actually, at the end of the day, it provides more specialist time than we provide currently to our elementary students. Tier two, as you know, as part of the preliminary budget, I had requested in their 1.6 FTEs to allow for department chairs at the middle school level. This model provided for a pre-K to four STEM coordinator and a pre-K to four humanities coordinator. And then we would have the department chairs at the middle school, which would require .4 release time for the content area, teachers, math, science, social studies, and English. It would either be 1.6 FTE, or if we couldn't provide and find staffing at .4s, we could have a 1.0 curriculum coordinator, which is there instead. If we were to reduce that ask of about 125,000, we would shift the pre-K to four humanities and pre-K to four STEM to pre-K to eight to manage this with the expectation that we would have the team leader stipends in the content areas at the middle school level to support as well. This also includes the reduction of an elementary position. This position right now, the Oldham School, has minimal class sizes or some class sizes that could be combined. So this would be a tier two reduction possibility at the Oldham. This one is something that I'm not recommending. I don't love, I don't love any of these, but in particular, moving to scenario one, as you know, we were going to have to request an additional teacher. So I do not recommend that we do this, although there is a way to do it for next year. The next one is the reduction of a high school position. That would either be ELA or a science position. You saw the class size analysis that Dr. Gallagher provided to you at our last meeting. And so that would be a reduction there that we could manage. In the preliminary budget, we increased salaries for our transportation drivers. We are incredibly low, and we have a difficult time finding drivers for our students. So this would decrease that by $200,000 with the possibility of over time increasing that as we move forward. That's an additional $482,200. We have not touched fees. That would be in a tier three. I have not gone there yet because right now, with this total, we are at 1.3, about $1.3 million. All of these have a substantial impact on the school district. I think tier two has impact as well. And tier one certainly has an impact, but they're obviously things that I believe that we could actually do and support a good, solid system moving into next year. I will also share that the specialist piece is something that can be extended into FY27 and still be feasible with the same amount of staff as we go. So I'm going to stop there, Madam Chair. There are other pieces here, obviously, that are in this. One of the things that we're concerned about are things like the medic mass health positions that we have in the budget that we're looking at a warrant before. And we want to reduce our dependence on stabilization funds for specialty at some point. So we put $100,000 there as well. So I will stop there and ask any questions or pick any questions you have.
Great. Thanks, Tim. Kate?
Can you talk about the one sub-separate sped position? I got the librarians, the wellness, the Latin teacher. And what I did wasn't clear where the sub-separate sped's position was coming from.
Yeah, so we have some, we have some current fifth, current fourth graders in our sub-separate programs that are moving up, are moving up to Copley next year. So we do not need that many sub-separate teachers at the elementary level. So there would be just a shift up to the middle school.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Teresa?
Thank you. Mr. Luff, for the Latin, I know you said that there would be funds in the budget to support students who are currently in Latin and need to continue it to get the graduation requirement. How much is being in the budget for that?
We are still looking at that number right now, Ms. Stewart. It's unclear at this moment in time.
And do we know what platform? Would it be Edmentum or are we exploring different opportunities?
It will likely be Edmentum. We have looked at programs through tech which do not offer Latin. Unfortunately, we have many free spots in tech. They do not offer Latin. It's the one that they don't.
Okay. And then another question, Emory, if that's okay. I think I'm clear on this, and I know we talked about it a lot in the last budget subcommittee, but it's important for me that the community understands because as we were advocating for the five through eight middle school over the past couple of years, as the school committee, we made the commitment that we would not be taking away from elementary in order to staff a five through eight. So what my understanding is, we're not doing that. And in fact, you and Dr. Munoz have just looked at the specialist schedule in a different way than it has been looked at in the past and have found a way to improve upon it and offer the specialist programming to our K through four more in terms of number of minutes. And that you would have looked at that possible efficiency regardless of opening up a new five through eight. Is that accurate?
That is, that is, that is correct. I mean, looking at the specialist schedules, they work incredibly hard right now, and they work incredibly hard in a schedule that is not perfect at all. And there's a lot of inequity in the provision of specials all across the elementary schools. This actually gives consistency for each school. Some schools benefit a little bit less, right? Because some schools already have an incredible amount of services and structures and space that really work for them. Some schools don't have that at all. So this does give more time, and it gives some consistency for the specialists. And the negatives there, right, are in some cases, you know, the community that some of the specialists have with their one to two schools right now, where they might be at one school for two and a half days, another school for two and a half days. There's a feeling that they might not be able to have that if they're at one school for the first half of the day and one school for the second half of the day. So, and there's some concerns with travel, right? I will share with you that it would probably be about $1,000 to put in the budget to make sure that they are compensated for travel if we decide to do that because it's a daily basis and no other, currently, no other staff members required to travel on a daily basis. So there's that. And there are questions about breakdown and quickly before they leave and those things. So we're working through those things with the specialists now. They're going to have a conversation tomorrow, actually, about what the specialist schedule looks like in our eyes right now. And they're going to work through that to see if there are any other benefits or changes that we can make to make it work better for them. And again, there are some space concerns, but I would be doing this regardless because I think we have a duty to our taxpayers too, right? And looking at the overall budget process to look at efficiencies that we can have while providing better services to kids.
Kate? So it sounds like you're talking to specialists, which is great to hear, and that the building leaders are also in this conversation and have been part of it.
They have been. They have been. We met with them again yesterday. I met with individuals, as a group yesterday, and individual leaders who had some, still had some concerns. So we've been working through all the issues with them and solving a lot of the issues that we've gone through. So they have been involved, I would say some of the specialist leaders have been involved, the specialists overall. Not all of them yet have seen this, so there's going to be kind of a review with them tomorrow just so they have an understanding of what this means. I'm not sharing the specialist schedule that we presented yet here because it could change. And I don't, I don't want to have any questions about that and say, hey, this is what's in stone. Because there are different ways, you know, when you have a PLC, a group of people that can look at this a little bit differently and say, hey, yeah, but this summer, we could do it this way. You know, so that could still change. But yes, we've been involving everyone in conversations about this.
Okay, and sorry, Emory, I just have another question related. You had said something about scenario one and space being affected by this adjustment. Could you just clarify that? I didn't quite catch what you were talking about there.
There, for the most part, I think one school, I think it's Prescott, they had, with scenario one, they would have had an ability to have a lot of separate classrooms for different things. So this doesn't allow the full ability to what they had thought they might be able to get. There's, we're still working through that. For example, you know, trying to figure out how to have music and art at the same time, right? In the morning kind of a thing, and where those things would be located. You know, and trying to move and break up literacy centers where there might be 11 staff and they're now breaking them down into two different rooms. Those things might not be able to occur in the way that the principals have desired. So there are issues there, but we're also looking at the fact now that we have entirely open spaces for an entire afternoon where we can shift different things to do. So in this, in our model, just so you know, all the specialists, three specialists will be assigned to, you know, actually, four specialists will be assigned to one building in the morning and then move to a second building in the afternoon, and they will do that for each day. What that allows for is for them to have common planning time together in the morning. They actually travel together if they want to, go to the second building. But it opens up space, for example, in the morning at one of the, one of the buildings entirely because the specialists aren't there. So we're talking with Jeff about instrumentals being, you know, on the opposite side of that. So then this space available with the instrumentals were currently conflicting, they wouldn't conflict. So we're still working through space issues. I think we can solve them, but there are different avenues that we have to work through, especially the Prescott to do that. Because we don't want things, we don't want music to be on cards, for example. So we're working through that. But there are some concerns where what we thought might happen with scenario one, we might have to just wiggle a little bit to get that maximum of space that we were looking for.
Okay, I think I understand. So it's a more efficient programming in terms of, in terms of the special offering, specials offering and time that the kids get. It's just because there might be more than one thing going on, it affects space availability in certain places. Okay.
Any other questions? Teresa?
Yeah, thank you. Under the tier two, the reduction potentially of an elementary position at Oldham. You were saying, Mr. Luff, there would be a way potentially to do it for next year. It would increase class sizes a little bit, but still be manageable. But you're not recommending it because the following year, with the model that the school committee supported, we would have to add that position back.
That's correct. You would have to ask for that one back. Yep.
Would it be just that one back or would it be that one and one more?
I would have to look, look at it. It could be more. I believe when I put in the scenario one, we were always expecting to have one additional teacher. Whether that, that's going to be all kind of played out when we look at enrollment next year and all those pieces, but at least this one and possibly another one based on what we had for enrollments back in October when we shared scenario one.
Okay.
And we're over the three, the 1.2 at 1.3, so that's sort of optional, I mean, to that extent?
Yeah, if you were to do all of this, it would be about 1.3 million. Now, you don't have to go to 1.2, you know, if, you know, I mean, Teresa had discussed, Ms. Stewart had discussed, you know, looking at this as about $800,000, you know, I mean, in terms of what they were looking at. But yes, if you were to do all of this, it would be 1.3, and then you could somewhat pick and choose, I guess, in the tiers, depending on what you, what you decide. I would not recommend the elementary position. I really, you know, the department chair piece, they're the curriculum coordinator at the middle school. I think the middle school needs the attention on curriculum, so I don't necessarily support that. You know, the curriculum coordinators are currently in place. Believe with the team leader structure that I had shared with those stipends that are in the budget, that that would be okay. But I think that's something that I just, I hesitate because I want the middle school to have the attention that they, that they need as well.
So there would still, sorry, so if we reduced department chairs at the middle school, they would still have, what would be left and what, how would they, how would it contribute to the PLC type, you know, the, the?
So within the budget, there are stipends for PLC leaders still at the elementary level for grades kindergarten, one, two, three, four, special at ELL. There's also team leader stipends at the middle school for science, social studies, English, and math. So those would still be in play. And the curriculum coordinators, if they were pre-K to eight, would work with those folks who are stipended to be able to support the content level curriculum and improvements that way. It would take away the ability to have someone there that could help evaluate because the team leaders would not be able to do that. But we are also adding an assistant principal. We are also adding a special education coordinator. So it would just be those four content areas that we would have a little bit less time to evaluate those, those folks. I think the curriculum coordinators would be more focused on curriculum, and they would not, they would not do any evaluations in this process.
Something I could, could add. It might be a little confusing because it says reduce, but we're not, that line isn't reducing something that we already have. It's taking away something that we were hoping to add to, you know.
Yeah, so it's reducing the proposed, is what it says, middle school.
Right, yeah.
But we're also, the PLC leaders is a new initiative as well, right?
That's correct. So it's there, it's there, but the, if the department chairs were there, they would be those PLC leaders, just to be, just to be clear.
It's not a double, double up.
Right, right. But there were, there was funds in there for the stipends.
So this, and the stipends are less expensive?
Yes.
So we could ostensibly trial the less extensive, excuse me, expensive version and reevaluate after the opening of the middle school. And, but it's always harder to get more money, and I understand that.
And in the preliminary budget rounds that we've seen, we put in sort of an amount to cover all of these various scenarios under the curriculum coordination. So we never really added the FTE. If we do keep that proposed middle school department chair in the budget, we do have to add that 1.6 FTE, so it does increase our FTEs a little bit if we go with that.
But the money is there.
The money is there, yeah.
The FTE is not there.
So in tier one, oh, sorry, Emory. In tier one, we are cost neutral in terms of benefits to the town, correct?
We're saving, I'd say we were saving benefits in tier one because we'll be reducing, well, yeah, because if we didn't do tier one, we'd still have the increases at the middle school, right? And we wouldn't be shifting some of these positions. So we'd have more positions, we'd have five more positions basically staff. So there is a savings to the, to the town on benefits in this one.
Well, just know the preliminary budget had 9.6 FTEs, right, in addition.
Well, 11.6 at the end, right?
That's with the, with the department chairs, right?
Oh, no, originally it was 9.6 middle school, then we added the Director of Safety, and we added one more, I think. So it was up to 11.6.
Yeah, so it's roughly, it's not equal to what it is this year, Teresa, right? Because there are additional positions. This is just reducing five positions that we've asked for in the preliminary budget.
Okay, so it's taken from needing benefits of 11.6 FTEs to 6.6.
Yes, yep.
That's a good way to put it. Yeah.
Thank you.
And Mr. Manning, is the town still budgeting about 20,000 per FTE for benefits? Is that the number we're still working with?
That seems right. We should, we should confirm that with them because the health insurance rates are going up like 10%, so that's quite an increase.
Right, yeah, we should ask that tomorrow at BBC.
Yeah.
Mr. Luff, on tier two, the elimination of, I think you said either ELA or science at the high school. How do you determine which one? Is it after you go through the whole course selection process? How do you determine which one? Is it after you go through the whole course selection process at the high school and knows, know what students have requested?
It, it will be, it will be. So Dr. Gallagher and I are working through that right now and who that, and what position that would be. It's just unclear right now.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Everybody okay with us bringing this forward to BBC tomorrow?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Anne Marie was just, could you talk through the next steps? So what, and what, what you need from us today under this list?
Well, I mean, the discussion today to, certainly whether we're all in agreement that these are things that we can support, removing, you know, just overall direction from the committee on what you want us to advocate for. And BBC obviously will advocate for all of this to be, to be back in. But I think, you know, as we know, we're, we're facing some pretty, pretty significant structural deficit. We know we have, you know, quite a bit of free cash, but there is obviously a fiscal responsibility not to be using one-time funds for revolving, you know, for recurring expenses. So, you know, that, you know, this is what we've been asked to do. So we just, you know, Tim and Sean and, and all the different, you know, leaders within the system have been, have been working really hard on what can be reduced further and not majorly affect instruction. And this is the first, at least, you know, pass at that. I, I think, you know, the tier one savings are pretty obvious that we can, you know, these are things that we can, you know, we can go forward with. I think the tier two ones are the ones that we're really kind of looking for direction on what people are feeling, how people, you know, I, we had a lot of discussion in, in budget balancing, not budget balancing, sorry, budget subcommittee, about which of these, you know, we personally were feeling were the ones that we would not want to touch. But of course, we want the direction of the committee before we go into that BBC meeting. If, if it comes down to all of them, none of them, half of them, you know, I had suggested during the balancing, budget subcommittee, geez, I'm crow, sorry. You know, half of that, you know, could we go half of that transportation salary increase? Because we know we need to do that, you know, could we do the 100,000, like just what, what are people comfortable with to, for us to get to a number that everyone, you know, in budget balancing is going to be comfortable, is going to be comfortable with?
Okay, that's helpful to know that we're looking at, like, our recommendations on tier two for the most part, because obviously it feels like in terms of the next step with BBC, they're going to say, great, take it all, you know.
Yeah, we want to make the case, obviously, that like, we don't want to get rid of anything in tier two for sure. We don't want to get rid of any of it, but like, if everybody's being asked to tighten up their, you know, their belts, then I, I get it, you know. And so these are the things in tier one that, okay, we can, we can, we can do this. But tier two is going to be, make things a lot more uncomfortable for, you know, the direction that we want to take schools in.
Right. I think you're right about, sorry, Teresa, just one more thing. I think you're right about the driving, the transportation costs, especially because I think that's something that's can get harder and more expensive later. If we don't at least have, go into it with a little bit of a war chest, as it were, that's probably a terrible.
We end up with contracts, you know, that are way more expensive than just paying drivers a living wage.
Yeah, and I guess I would just want to know what my colleagues are, where, you know, what their thoughts are on the department chair. Our yield.
I'll let Teresa go and then I'll give you my opinion.
Thanks, yeah. Just, I, I think we all know this, but just to make sure. None of these are decisions that BBC will make tomorrow. Like, that is not the role of BBC. So we, we do want to provide an update to them of our administration has done further analysis through budget subcommittee and then through this meeting today. This is what the school committee has considered. I do think we need some formal motions and votes tonight. So we have like clear direction of, you know, what Anne Marie and I should vote on tomorrow or not. That'll be very helpful, because no matter what happens tomorrow, more, one way or the other, more is coming back to the school committee next week. So the more direction we have today makes tomorrow more efficient, makes next week more efficient, gets us through the month of March. There's some things that I want to say about the middle school department chair proposals that I can't say until we get into executive session. Some things you've heard me say before, my, my thoughts have not changed too much on this topic, but I'll wait until we get into executive session on that. I'm not comfortable with most of the tier two stuff, though. Financially, I, I worry about reducing an elementary position anywhere because we know we need it back, first of all. Secondly, over break, we got an email from somebody that I'm just realizing I never responded to. I apologize, I will do that later tonight. That brought up the number of move-ins at one of our schools. And a follow-up question, Tim and Sean, I don't expect you to have the answer tonight, but maybe we can look at it more in budget sub later this week, is what are those move-in numbers at all of the schools? And I know at least last year and the year before, I don't know if it's true this year or not, Oldham has witnessed some move-ins and turnover. So if we think that trend is going to continue, then I'm even less comfortable with reducing somebody at Oldham for, for next year. I wouldn't want to reduce a high school position at this time in ELA or science until we know what our kids have requested. As we all know, our, our graduation requirements are four years of English and three years of science. We should protect that. The, the Latin removal from a numbers perspective makes sense to me based on the numbers of students in the class that we saw from Dr. Galligan at our last meeting. I don't know if I'm quite here that, quite there yet in ELA or science. And then I agree, Anne Marie and Kate, I don't think we want to reduce the transportation salary increase by 200,000.
Yeah, and just to follow up in what Teresa was saying, so it's, BBC is, you know, what, we have a discussion, we have, we obviously are going to fight for as much money as we possibly can. In the end, BBC will vote on what the percent increase or, you know, they're going to allow all of us across the entire town to have. So these are suggestions, these are where, you know, suggestions that we're, we're obviously, you know, making the presentation to BBC that in good faith effort, here are the things that we think we can reduce out of the budget. Obviously, nobody can tell us exactly where to spend the funds. Once we get the budget, that's, that's state law. But, you know, they, they're, they could, they could theoretically come back tomorrow and be like, oh no, everybody's got to cut 2 million. You know, and then these are just the tier two things are probably just the tip of the iceberg at that point. And that would be detrimental. And I'm not suggesting that's what's going to happen, but I'm just saying this, this is what, this is what the mandate is. They give us the, the bottom line budget number and we've got to live within it. So we're just showing you guys what, what, you know, cuts right off the top because we've been asked 1.2. We think 1.2 is a little bit much considering where we want to go forward with. We're com- comfortable, you know, air quotes with 830. To get to the, you know, to get to somewhere around that 1.2, we've got to get uncomfortable here and try to make a case for why we don't want to go 1.2.
Understand, okay.
Yeah. But as far as like the curriculum coordinator, department chairs, it just is briefly, like with none. I think we had, we had a bit of discussion in budgets up about that and, and I was comfortable one way and then Tim described it another way and I was like, ugh, now I'm back on it. And it's, it's kind of one of those really hard things where, you know, we've heard, you've heard, you've heard David and he's not here to defend himself, so words in his mouth, but you know, talk about things like, you know, going K through six and, I mean, Kate, you know, so there was that discussion, well, would, would that be an option to do like K through six and then, you know, department chairs, seven through? And there's just, it's really difficult to do something like that with the two different buildings, already difficult to do it. So there was a lot of discussion around that. You know, I'd like to support what Tim and his team think would be the best option. But if that's something that, you know, ends up, if we end up getting that mandate for this is the amount of money you get, like, this might just have to be something that we, we live within it.
So if you're looking based on what you and Teresa are saying and needing guidance, I think what I'm hearing is where you guys are at and the recommendation of the admin team is that tier one is more doable. Tier two, we are advocating to keep. And personally, I would support for that advocacy. Is that, like, are you looking for a motion beyond that to, to fight, you know, in terms of, to fight to keep tier two sort of thing?
Well, I guess one question I have, Kate, so I, at the last BBC meeting and also the last school committee meeting, and then Mr. Luff referenced it again tonight. Like, I put on the table, I don't think we can really reduce more than 800,000. So that's roughly tier one. I personally would want to continue to defend that tomorrow. But if the rest of you are saying, no, that's not the stance of the school committee, then really what I personally feel is kind of mute. So I, I, I need some direction. Like, do you want me to continue to advocate on that behalf tomorrow? Or is the majority of the school committee, you know, saying, no, we need to, we need to look beyond the 800,000?
I'm just a little stuck with the cart or the chicken before the egg here. In other words.
Yeah, we just basically want to know if they ask us to vote on a budget tomorrow that puts us down 1.5 million. Are we knows, like hard knows or, you know, I just want to know what the, you know, because we, we vote the will of the committee. We're, we're just representing the committee in this. So we, we want to make sure that we vote in line with the committee in that respect.
If I may, just, just one percentage point is about, is it 633,000, Sean?
Sorry, yeah, 1%. Yeah, actually, 1% from our current budget is 612,110.
Right. So the, the tier one gets us more than 1% down. So it gets us to about, gets us to about a 6.6 point what percentage budget?
Well, it takes it down 1.35%. So if we were at 8.1, we're down to about a 6.75% budget with tier one.
Okay.
Notice.
With the opening of a new middle school.
Yep.
Teresa?
Yeah, I'm just going through my notebook, my budget notebook, all the, the BBC meetings. So on, on January 23rd, the initial discussion was cutting that 1%. But then when we went back to BBC on February 6th, what had changed, just as a reminder, was that we had found out the healthcare, the health insurance costs were going up. Where we, the town had previously budgeted an 8% increase and it's now looking like 10 to 10 and a half percent minimum. So that changed from the finance commission's perspective, which I do appreciate and understand, that changed the calculus of how they were talking about it. Because with the healthcare insurance going up, if we didn't find a reduction elsewhere in the town and school's budget, then we were needing to take away from even more free cash. So I just put that out there as, as information, as we're, you know, deciding what we do tomorrow.
Joan?
So I would not want to cut beyond the 849,000. I'm also really interested to see what the historical averages of how low the budget projections have been versus the amount of free cash that has come in. So are, like, I'm, this is a, this as a town, we are dealing with a systemic issue. And I do not believe that we should be raising taxes, but I do see that my sewer rates, my water rates, all these other things go up. And it feels like it's been at least a couple of years in a row where we have had a surprise, surprise amount of free cash. And I'm just curious if there's, I guess, a calibration going on there so that we have a better initial starting budget? Because we wouldn't be in this situation if we hadn't had a surprise of free cash. Was it 29 million? How much was the surprise in free cash?
So it's currently at 20 million, but what was it before fall town meeting? Was that closer to the 29, I think? I think it was like 28 something.
Yeah.
And what about the year before? Because the year before, I know we also had a surplus.
We did. It was not nearly this. I'm forgetting.
No, but so it's, it's not the amount, it's how far above the projection. What percentage above our projection are we consistently coming in at? Because if we're consistently cutting two or 3% and free cash is consistently coming in 5% over the projections, we're going through a very long process for no, a, a process that harms our town by pitting us against each other for no reason.
The, well, you can't really do the percent. The percents aren't apples to apples because, you know, the overall percentage of the budget going, you know, being asked to cut or go up is very different than what the percent over projected is on any, in any given year. I know because it just depends on what projects are going to be done. So it does, I think in the case of free cash, you can't look at it percent wise because it would be, you know, an absolute number is going to fluctuate wildly.
Let me ask this in a different way, then. Is there a, is there a evidence of systemically under, of systemically conservatively underestimating what our budget will be as a town?
Anne Marie?
Yeah.
At the BBC meeting on January 23rd, we did start to talk about the local receipts. And my have did put on the table that we should have a discussion of how those are projected and if they are being done perhaps too conservatively. And we never looped back to that conversation as a BBC. So Joan, I hear what you're saying. I have questions as well. I don't have the answer. On the agenda for BBC tomorrow, my have did put on long-term financial planning. I envision that that part of the meeting, we could bring this back up. I don't know if Mr. Luff or Mr. Mannion have any further answers.
As, so you asked for direction from the school committee, I am proposing that beyond that 847, 849,000 dollar threshold that we hold and ask for that review before engaging in any more cuts.
That seems fair to me. I, I mean, I was planning to ask again tomorrow anyway.
I would second that if, and just reiterate that at this stage, yeah, I would encourage you guys to vote against going beyond that. And then, you know, at the next stage, we have a plan if, if they were to push back. But we, we just, for you guys to convey the damage or the, the negative implications of having to do that, I would be supportive of that.
Okay. So are we saying that as a formal motion?
I would just say that the, the document that I updated today and provided to you is not 849, it is 828,697 for tier one, I think I heard.
Yes, I have just been making up some numbers.
So I, I think, Joan, I don't know if you meant for this to be a motion, but were you saying don't go below the 828,697? And also ask for, for the review of the projections before we move forward on anything else?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'd say it was your second. All right, any other discussion? All right, I'll roll call. Teresa?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's four to zero. Okay. Any other discussion on the BBC or this, this spreadsheet? Anything else you want to bring us to bring to BBC tomorrow? Okay. All right, perfect. So let's move to the one other item that we have. Since we were calling everybody together, we do have one budget transfer on there. So Mr. Mannion, would you like to discuss that?
Sure. So we have one budget transfer. Can you just pull it up for myself? Do you want me to share it? Would that be helpful at all?
Yeah, that would, wouldn't mind.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're looking for one budget transfer to be approved by the school committee. This went in front of budget subcommittee and I believe agreed on bringing it to the school committee where it's a $50,000 transfer from what, what we're, we need to transfer to our legal services line. So we're overspent on the line that we budgeted for legal services for the year. We have two vendors that we're currently using for the legal services, which includes both the student services as well as the general district legal, legal services. And as of right now, we're, we're transferring it from a collective bargaining reserve. We had money in a reserve, but at this point in time, all the contracts for the year are settled and we've moved what monies we needed to out to the individual salary lines. You saw that large transfer that we discussed a couple of times. So we have some money that we don't anticipate spending. When you saw the quarterly to report, this money was not anticipated to be spending and spent in the reserve. And we're just going to transfer it to the legal line. It does go between It does go between the, it doesn't go between the major accounts. It's all within the 1,400s, but it is above the 25,000.
And I will, and I will share with the committee at a separate time in executive session, some of the ongoing litigation matters to address the reasons behind this.
All right, any questions on this item?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfer.
Second.
One second, Kate, any other discussion? Okay, Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And did we lose Joan?
I think we lost Joan.
Oh, there she is. There is Joan. Joan, did we lose you in enough time to vote on this or do you?
No, I heard it. I just got, I got dropped. I don't know why.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve the budget transfer, Kate. Yes, Teresa says yes, Joan?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'm a yes as well, so that passes four to zero. Wonderful. Okay, so that concludes everything on our regular session. In regular session, we do unfortunately need to go into executive session. So I do need a motion to go into executive session. We will only reconvene for the purpose of adjournment. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Seconded by Teresa, individualy, Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that is four to zero. So thank you very much for joining us this afternoon. We will be back for our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March. Get a look at my calendar. Is that right?
Next Wednesday.
See, that's on Tuesday, Wednesday, March 10th. Oh, my God. Too many meetings, too many meetings. Wednesday, March 5th, in the school committee room. Thank you very much for joining us.